So I'll call this meeting to order. At five thirty-five and take nomination for board chair.
I nominate Kevin.
Is there a second?
I will second. Oh, there you go.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Kevin Mara for board chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Kevin.
Guess I couldn't go to get myself.
Take it away.
Yes.
Okay. So now with that, I'll take nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Joshua Diamond.
I'd like to second that.
Great. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor for Josh Diamond as vice chair? Signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a vice chair. Okay. So, the next on the slate is board clerk. So, I'd like to take nominations from the floor for the position of clerk.
I nominate Giovanna. Second.
Excellent. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor? Signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, that brings us to, I think the first thing we should do from there is CSSU. So, if you don't know, we have, the appointments to the CSSU board are by...
Population, right? By the amount of children in the...
Uh, no, not at the K eights.
Not, no, no.
Actually...
Oh, really?
CSSU board, there are three for every board.
Oh, are there three for every? Oh, yeah, we changed that.
Every board. No, so what we did change last year, and we'll have to ask for permission again, is that we have four reps from the CDU board. The statute allows you to ask for permission to have an additional one, and you probably remember that our compelling reason for having a fourth rep was that they have thirteen hundred kids.
Yep.
And represent all the communities. And so we were allowed to have a, an additional rep at CDU because they were all clamoring to be on the CSSU board. That's how popular it is.
Go figure. So, we need to fill three positions. I'm interested, I think by default, am I a member, or...
We want, I mean, it's not default, but we expect that the board chair will be on the SU board.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm interested in serving. Are two of you more interested?
I'd be willing to continue.
Yeah, and if any, if nobody else jumps in, I'll do it too.
Okay, so do we need to...
You should take, you can take a collective motion if you want.
Oh, yeah, so can I have a motion to appoint Kevin, Josh, and Giovanna to the CSSU, CSSU board for this year?
So moved.
Second? Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. I think that leaves us with... Do we really have an assistant board clerk?
We haven't had one in the past, but I think Bob Mason would like to have someone he could call on. It should be a rare moment when he needs to call on someone, but it leaves him in a pickle.
If someone has...
Giovanna's on vacation or something and can't come in and...
No vacation for you.
Yeah.
I mean, really, this person would just be on call just in case.
Yeah, to...
Wasn't the chair the assistant clerk last time?
It can be.
Well, you may be, well.
I think that's a great...
Oh.
No, wait a minute.
Another, another job description responsibility.
Yeah, right. Really? You guys aren't around the school enough? If no one else wants to do it, I'm fine with being assistant clerk.
You know, not to jump, but you know, Karen, that might be, that might be a good thing.
Yeah, you should.
What is the, what is the, I don't even know what the clerk does.
Yeah. Signing off payroll and accounts payable.
Oh, okay.
So, and you're welcome to come in with me, so it's once every two weeks.
Okay.
On a Wednesday, and it normally happens in the morning hours.
It actually makes three each.
Right. I think that's a good training thing.
Um, and it's really good because you actually get to see. Fills up if you want.
Yeah.
It's good to have, and it takes, it takes, it really takes tops fifteen minutes, depending on whether you have questions or not.
The office.
Yeah. Okay.
And it's only if I'm not available.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can do that.
Great, so can I have a motion to nominate Karen as assistant board clerk?
I'd like to nominate Karen.
Great, wonderful. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Policy committee? Policy committee.
So, I was sick for that, but we got the red line changes in on it, and looking over the notes. Oh, are you talking about...
Great, you just nominated yourself.
Keep doing it. I'm fine with that.
And thank you for getting the red lines accomplished.
That's wonderful.
You're welcome. Yeah.
Uh, can I have a motion to appoint Kevin Broshu as a, our member to the policy committee?
I would, I'd like to nominate.
Second, please?
Second.
Great. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Great. Uh, negotiations committee, and we, oh, so, a couple of things here. So, Elaine, help me out with this. We, we need to appoint a rep.
Right, and Deb Baker Moody is in the middle of a process and is willing to stay, and there certainly is precedence for doing that.
We extended it last meeting, right?
I think you did. I thought you had already done it.
We did, we, we did. We gave, we voted...
So then you're all set.
So we're all set or one...
At the end of negotiations.
That's great. That's great. Good, so that brings us to FAPAC.
I would like to nominate Karen. She already goes there.
I was hoping somebody would nominate Karen and we could convince her this would be a good thing.
Because you're really there already, right?
I'm really there.
And you're doing such a great job.
I'm rarely not there.
If you wouldn't mind.
No, that's fine.
Great, so you'll act as our board rep to the FAPAC.
I have to have a different hat that I put on.
No, no, not unless you feel comfortable. No, it, actually, I think it's, it's great because it's a, it's a nice close match, and duty's really, come, come back to just reporting out, you know, what's happening back at board meetings. Great.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So, can I have a nomination to appoint Karen as our FAPAC rep?
Uh, I'd like to nominate Karen as our FAPAC rep.
In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other candidates? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Okay.
Very good.
Yeah, so I think... The only other thing, and I don't know if this is the time to do it, or whether we should, we can, we can choose to wait, is at some point we need to dig into the facilities subcommittee that we decided a few meetings ago that we would move forward with, so we need to appoint two of us to that. And, or no more than two of us to that, is really the best way to put it. And, uh, that committee, there's gonna be a little bit of setup work to that, because I think we wanna invite community members in, and we need to make sure that we touch base with the right folks at administration to help us out, and, you know, come together with an agenda and an idea of how many meetings that will take, so... I haven't thought that through quite honestly, so do we wanna hold on that? The only thing I'm concerned about is I know Lyle's got some things he wants to get moving on and talking to us about, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And Lyle and I are gonna be on the committee, so...
They're good. Wasn't gonna give you much choice on that.
No vote needed.
Yeah, no vote needed on that, so...
So, I, I would recommend that we try to get something done, so we can kinda at least get started, and start getting community members and things like that. I totally agree with you, so, sooner the better.
And so you want it to be part of it, right?
Yeah, I'm willing, I'm, I'm willing to be a part of it. That being said, I'm, I'm filling my plate up quick here, so...
But you have professional background in engineering, in mechanical engineering, so I, I, I feel strongly that, I know you're doing a lot, and I deeply appreciate it, but...
Well played, Josh. So I have interest, but we need another, we need, we need another member. Does another member have interest?
I, I would do it if no one else wants to, but I don't have any, you know, specialty that I bring to it.
Your common sense. That's what we need.
So if someone else here has that kind of background, I'm happy to defer and...
I don't know that I have a background in any of that, honestly, but, uh, I'm willing to, I'm willing to do it, if, uh...
I mean, yeah.
Okay, don't jump all over it, guys.
All volunteer.
Okay, great. So, can I have a, can I have a motion to appoint myself and Kevin Broshu?
This will get confusing.
Yeah, this will get confusing.
So moved.
Kevin Square.
Kevin Square, yes.
To our facility subcommittee. So, so moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Good. I think we are, our appointments are full. Am I correct?
Yes. You're all set.
With even a bonus one. Okay. So, item three on the agenda is adjustments to the agenda. Do we have any? John, did you have anything you wanted to change?
Nope.
Carter, do you still want to, um, move actions above discussion, so that you can exit a little bit quicker this evening?
That would be good, if you could, if it's not a problem.
I don't think we have anything, sort of like, relying on the others, so if anyone...
Eight would become seven.
Yeah, so if no one has any complaints, we'll do action before consent tonight. So eight will become seven. Great. Any other adjustments? Okay. Audience and communications? I've asked, no answer. Great. So let's move on to presentations, and finally, you guys can take the floor. School counseling. Welcome.
Thank you. Is it best that we sit in terms of the mic?
That's, I, I think you probably would be okay if you get up and, and move.
Okay, well, either way, we, we can go either way, so it's, it's more, we're gonna have to definitely, you know, toggle a little, your kind of thing.
Yeah, I know, you gotta shuffle around anyway. I would say if you're comfortable standing and presenting, please do.
Yeah, absolutely. First of all, I want to say thank you, um, for giving us the opportunity to come and, and share a little bit about school counseling services in the Williston School District. We were here a few years ago, um, but we're always happy to come back because, uh, you know, the more we can keep you informed of what we're doing to help student learning, you know, the better. So, first want to introduce our colleagues here. Um, so, obviously, I think everyone knows everyone, but maybe not. So, I'm Chris Ford. I'm one of the school counselors at Williston Central School. This is my twentieth year at Williston Central School, um, so getting up there, now I'm a senior member here, so, you know. So, thank you.
Yeah, he's got me beat by just a few. I'm Shannon Duggar. I'm really glad to be here tonight. This is my first year at Williston Central School as school counselor.
Welcome.
Yes.
And I'm Carolyn Tatlock, and I'm the Allen Brook School Counselor, and this is my seventh year, believe it or not.
So, we have a little presentation prepared with information. Again, we're happy to share it to you, with you electronically if you want it. We do have paper copies for those of you that would like it. If you wanna jot notes, you, uh, we've made six, or five copies, six copies, if you would like it. Weren't really sure how many people were here. But again, we can obviously share it with you. And our focus today, or tonight, and this is kinda what was, I think, brought forward from the board in terms of what you were hoping to learn at this point about school counseling services, is that, you know, just to understand how we're related to the coordinated school health model, something that the state of Vermont, you know, has taken a lot of, uh, has done a lot of work on, and our, our district now, CSSU, is starting to take, um, more work on and do more work on. To learn about the current components of our counseling program, mainly looking at the preventative and interventions that we do to help support students and student learning, um, and getting, hopefully achieving the outcomes that we all hope for, for kids as they navigate from pre-K up through eighth grade. And then just kinda getting a sense of, you know, where, what are our areas of focus right now as, as school counselors, and also looking ahead at next steps. And if there's other things that you want, certainly at the end, um, I, I, I don't know, we didn't really talk about this, whether questions during, you know, or after, we're, I think we're pretty flexible, so, you know, if you have a, a question you wanna ask at any time, feel free, um, but certainly we'll give some time at the end as well. I know we have about, I don't know how much time exactly, but I think, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes, and then some questions and answers. Yeah.
All right. So I'm just gonna talk a little bit about the coordinated school health model. So there are eight components of the coordinated school health model, um, and there's a diagram in there as well. And, um, the school counselors, we have our own little area with social services at six o'clock. I'm gonna go around clockwise. School counseling and social services are at the bottom, and health, uh, healthy school environment is next, health promotion for staff, family and community involvement, prevent, prevent, comprehensive health education, physical education, school health services, and school nutrition services. And as I was looking at this, I was really struck by how really this, this half, or these four areas right here, I feel like school counselors are a real big part of that, and it varies from school to school, I think, in districts. But, um, we are such a big part, I think, of the healthy school environment, as well as all of the school. Everybody's working on that, but when I think of things like PBIS that we're gonna talk a little bit about, I feel like we've become a real big structure for that, and also working with the staff, and of course, I think one of our passions, uh, the three of us as professionals, but also in our profession, is working with families, that that's a really important piece. So all of these are integrated. Everybody in the school is working on all of these pieces, and, um, we're gonna share a little bit about what our specific piece is.
So, you know, our components of the school counseling program, um, hate to read something off a slide, but this one I think is, I do want you to hear that, you know, the mission of our program is to support learning for all students. You know, we're not a reactive model where we only talk with the children who are having problems, of course. We wanna really be there for the whole school community and culture. And so we provide services that promote the development in three main areas: academic, social, emotional, and then college and career readiness, and that is true for our model, um, K through twelve, and we'll talk a little bit about each of tho, those components at each of the buildings. Both the CSSU mission, of course, which fits very nicely into school counseling and our mission, as well as the American School Counselor Association, which is just the national association that dedicated to helping, um, define the best practices in the profession of school counseling. And ASCA offers, uh, professional development resources to families and professionals in those three domains, um, and keeps us current on, on best practices. I happen to sit on the Vermont School Counselors Association Board as president-elect currently, and so had the good fortune of going to the ASCA conference this past summer, and was able to sort of hear some things right from the people who are creating them, kind of at the top of that, so that was great to be able to bring that back to our, to our district as well. Okay, so, um, preventative supports and services. Of course, there are many ways that we feel we are promoting prevention and really getting in front of, um, issues that may arise for students and families, so we're just gonna highlight some of the major ones that we, that we do. So, at both buildings, we do have classroom guidance lessons, um, which is really great. As you may know, you know, some schools do not, are not afforded that, uh, as, as a regular part of the curriculum, and so we feel really proud of it. That's really important. All of our curriculum is, is research and evidence-based. Um, of course, it really varies what a typical guidance lesson looks like in first grade versus your eighth grade, um, so it's developmentally appropriate. The systematic delivery just speaks to the fact that it's, it's their regular classes, and it's built into the schedule, and they're planful as opposed to reacting to a problem and going in to try to teach about that. We, we know what we think students at certain developmental ages need to be, um, prepared with, so that's what we teach to. And again, it's great that we, we reach every student in K through eight, so that's also important. Um, also, a big piece of our work is individual and small group counseling. So what this looks like, both for individual and the group work, is that we get, um, referrals, um, from a variety of sources. So students themselves will often ask to be a part of a group, or will come to us, especially possibly at the older grades, but I'm sure they see you in the hall too, Carolyn, and ask you for one. And also, of course, from parents and teachers. And there are different ways at the buildings that we collect these referrals, but it's, it's happening on a continuous basis, and it's also somewhat data-driven, so there's a need, and then we put an intervention into place, we assess how that small group or how that individual work, um, addressed the goals of that work, and then readjust the service. It is short-term. Um, when there is a situation that a student is facing or family where it feels like really there needs to be longer-term or deeper therapeutic counseling, we of course help with the referrals out for those services. So, um, our work is short-term. In that sense, usually around six to ten weeks cycles, um, and of course that varies a bit. But themes are, this is just a snapshot of some. Of course, we do a lot of different, um, group work and individual goals, but these are some of the main ones that we see often around anxiety and family changes. Of course, social skills and friendship skills are huge. Emotional regulation, as well as, um, you know, study skills and executive functions. We're kinda getting into all of that with our students in various levels, so... Okay, and then also, we, we do things, um, that affect the whole school, school-wide population. So some of these things that, we're just gonna give you a little snippet here, and we'll go into a little more detail later, but, um, as Carolyn mentioned, our Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, or PBIS as it's called, um, is a structure that is designed to, um, promote positive behaviors and promote a positive culture as opposed to a culture of reaction. A lot of you probably have some familiarity with this. Depending on the age of your children or students, you have probably seen little buzzers, buzzies coming from Allen Brook, which is a tangible acknowledgement of the positive behaviors that are happening in the school. Smart cells are coming from Williston Central School. So, um, that's something that myself and Chris both sit, and Carolyn, sit on all of the PBIS committees in our buildings. Assemblies and school celebrations. We're often behind planning these, again, based on sort of the needs assessments of our student population, as well as best practices, what, what we feel is important for our students to be aware of. Student leadership groups we'll talk more about. We are heavily involved in the placement and transition, which I can't believe in my first year is right around the corner. That process is starting in a couple weeks, so that will be exciting, and constant parent consultation and collaboration. We work with the families as partners, of course, and, um, also just respond to the needs of themes that are coming up in our parent collaboration. We will try to, um, either invite certain speakers or host certain events that really address the needs of our larger parent community. School and committee work. Um, I did, I will admit, I did have to refresh what some of these acronyms mean, because you're gonna date with acronyms, I'm sure, so, um, if it is of interest, I will let you know. So ESTs are educational support teams that are really helping around kind of that academic domain, helping students reach their academic potential, um, in a variety of ways, and those are teacher and house-based, um, committees. RAPS stand, and Carter, correct me if I'm wrong, stands for Williston Resource Allocation of People and Services. So, when our, when our EST teams are still looking for more information or looking for more ideas, or they're not meeting the goals that they hope to meet, often a student will be brought to RAPS team to have further and deeper conversation around the data that we've collected. GAD RAPS, Guidance and Administrators. Oh, no, I had responsive prevention. Guidance and Administrators.
Responsive prevention.
Responsive prevention. So that's a, that's a team where guidance office, the school counselors and the administrators meet weekly, and at Williston Central, we're also meeting with the school nurse, and we're meeting with our, um, behavior folks, Nadine and Jo, um, and our school social worker, and then various, you know, people who are relevant to our agenda. But that's really nice to be able to meet and connect and share data and be on top of, um, the, the issues that are arising for our specific students. Um, FAP, you know, Leadership and Program Council at, at both buildings?
Yep.
Yep. And our coordinated school health, which was a, a team that did a lot of its work last year to develop kind of, and, um, create planning around the model that Carolyn spoke to a little while ago. Our PBIS teams, both Carolyn and I are, are homeless coordinators for the buildings, and treatment teams, just, um, in response to individual student need as it comes up, we are often invited or facilitating all of those teams.
All right. I get all the fun graphics, of course. So just to talk a little bit about Allen Brook's, um, preventative services, I have to say, it's, it was kinda fun to reflect back on, you know, what we are doing, and what we have been doing, where we've been, and where we're, we're going to, and I feel like when I came seven years ago with Beth Sumner, um, you know, she had already built this wonderful program, and I am really proud of the work that I've done and with my job share partners that I have had in the past, the things that I've built, because I feel like we have really created a school, school-wide culture and language for problem solving, for feelings around bullying, now mindfulness. And I'm, this year, really working, um, on personal safety with this new curriculum, and I just feel so proud of all of that that's in place and that kids know. So for classroom guidance, I'm in all of the kindergarten, first, and second grade classrooms. In the fall, I'm in the kindergarten for six classes, um, five classes, that is, um, and talking about feelings and problem solving, um, introducing myself to them. And then in the spring, now I'm doing six classes, weekly classes, in all of the kindergarten rooms on personal safety. And this program that I'm using is from Second Step, which has been around for a long time, um, as a conflict resolution program, but it is the first personal safety program that I just feel like hits the mark in every way, and it has a parent component and teacher training module, and I'm, it's just great. So, and then in the first and second grade classrooms, I'm part of the relief schedule, so I'm scheduled in with related arts, and, um, those are forty-minute classes once a week, and I'm in, um, I'm in those classes for nine-week periods, um, at a rotating time. So, and with that, in the first and second grades, I've kind of been able to build a two-year program where I can more heavily focus on conflict resolution one year, but including everything, all the mandates that I need to with bullying, with personal safety, and then, of course, you know, here are little people just coming in and learning about feelings and expressing them and, um, and identifying them. So, um, the, I have one year that's really heavily focused on conflict resolution, using Kelso's Choices, um, for big and small problems, and then the second year, I've built in a lot around mindfulness, but, um, the thing I'm loving is I've, I've incorporated a lot of neuroscience with that, so helping kids understand how mindfulness is helping them to focus their attention. Not to mention, you know, just relaxing their bodies and, um, coping with things. So, um, I have a paragraph of all the different things that I'm teaching. We do have several mandates, so it does feel like there's so much to pack in in those nine weeks, and I would love to have more weeks so that I could really do the personal safety curriculum in its full entirety, um, but it's packed for now.
I'm gonna go on.
So, next slide, please.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Just in relation to what you just said. So, you would like to incorporate the entire curriculum, but it's only nine weeks long. Is it because that's a rotation?
Um, no, yes, so having, there's four rotations of nine weeks, and that's, um, all we can have right now. You know, it's, so I, I fit in, um, a lot of the parts of personal safety, like around identifying adults that they need, that they can trust to talk to, talking about feelings, like an inner siren. I teach a lot about that, trusting your gut feeling. A lot of those things I'm able to incorporate throughout my other weeks, but for actual personal safety teaching, I can devote like two full classes to that, and the truth is with this curriculum, there is six classes. So, that would be something if I, I would love to have more, um, time to fit in to be able to do that, because I think it's pretty critical.
Me too.
But nobody wants to come in on weekends and do that, so, just kidding. So then for small group counseling, you know, in Williston, there's always been a heavy emphasis on small group counseling, and, you know, those... And, you know, those are really needs-based for such a variety of reasons. And most of my referrals do come from parents or from our EST meetings or a teacher might identify that a child needs help with social skills or parents and teachers collaboratively. But I do get kids coming up too and asking for help, for sure. For individual student support, that, over time, that really needs to happen. I don't know about with you guys, but at lunchtimes and snack times a lot, kids are really scheduled with their academics. So I'm really mindful of not taking them away from academics if that, if that's the case. I'm very thoughtful about scheduling that. But I do have about fifteen to twenty kids that I meet with on a weekly basis, whether it's just a quick little check-in or a longer time that I meet with them. And then school-wide supports, I feel like I'm kind of everywhere when I think about, you know, a lot of these teams. John and I are like, we're in this meeting and this meeting and this meeting. But John and I have been with PBIS from the start. I'm so proud of that and what we've done. And I started off as the team leader for the Tier One and then became team leader of Tier Two and then said, okay, you know, we need somebody else to do Tier One to oversee it so Sherry Carr does that. But I'm still actively part of that and the Tier Two and Three teams. I'm the leader of that. I sit and facilitate five weekly EST meetings for all of the teams. Kindergarten, we break into two teams. Placement and transition, we already talked a little bit about. And, you know, I'm seeing it in writing, I mean, we're talking about just at Allen Brook, like three hundred children every year that are in a transition, incoming kindergarten, K to one and two to three. So it's a hefty job. And then treatment teams are something that kind of have evolved. You know, when kids are having a lot of major behaviors or intensive issues that are going on and really need a wraparound support team, that's where we've developed a treatment team model. And often I'm the case manager of that or I'm sitting on the team meeting. And we've had monthly meetings with families and, and the support teams. And it's really made a big difference.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
About treatment teams?
Yeah.
So would this be where, what we just approved for next year's curriculum of K to four emotional trauma? Is that where that would fall?
I, that I'm sure every single child that would be part of that would have a treatment team. Yeah.
I think there's some overlap. You know, these treatment teams, it comes really from the mental health model, you know, where the Howard Center would have a treatment. We would have a child that had just as significant clinical issues in so many ways. And we may, instead of waiting for them to put a treatment team together, we should do a treatment team. It's been, you know, your leadership has been great doing that. And I think there is some overlap. We're still sort of creating exactly what the success program will look like, but I'm, I'm sure if you had a Venn diagram, there'd be overlap.
Yeah. So who, understanding this overlap, but who at the end of the day is going to be in charge? Will it be counseling, will it be academics, special ed? Do you, is there someone who will be leading that team, so to speak? And who will that be?
Treatment team, there's a case manager of the treatment team that is appointed often. It's, you know, sometimes it's the, it's the school social worker that's connected to Howard. Sometimes it's Carolyn.
Or sometimes it's been the special educator too. It looks like there's a heavy learning concern or, you know, that down the road that might be a child that we might look at more assessment on the special educator. It's kind of been a needs-based, like we talk about who makes the most sense to lead that. And it fits really nicely into the Tier Three part of PBIS because that's exactly what it's about, is wrapping the family and the child and starting with the family to say, what are your goals? So that's worked really well. And I'm also the check-in, check-out intervention coordinator along with the Tier Two and Three U team. And so that's an intervention for kids that are, well, the very clinical definition is kids that have four to six major behaviors occurring in a two to three month period. We look at that data on a regular basis. Every two weeks, we sit down as a Tier Two or Three team and we look and say, well, this is an intervention that we know works for those kids to provide an adult to check in in the morning and the afternoon with a goal. And that's been a real success.
Thank you.
So that was ABS. Now I'll just give you a little snapshot of WCS, some of the preventative services that are happening currently this year. So as we go through each category from the classroom work to the group work and such. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the classroom work that we're doing. So we have about seven hundred and twenty students in our building right now. And thankfully, we are able to provide educational services to all kids, which is wonderful. Jackie Parks has been instrumental in helping us get into the schedule and being able to have that systematic delivery of classes. So currently, we have six classes with students in grades five through eight. And they're into five, six groupings and seven, eight groupings. And that's part of, it's kind of connected through the related arts schedule. So one day out of tech ed, when kids are in the tech ed rotation in fifth and sixth grade, they, one of those days a week, they come to a class with Shannon and I. And when they're in seventh and eighth grade, it's out of the music rotation. And so one day out of that music rotation. The related arts rotations are six weeks long, so we get six classes with all students, which is working great because it's a lot of students to try to cover. You know, we could always say, yeah, we want more classes, but, you know, we have a very, many roles and many hats that we have as counselors. You know, we're trained as, you know, we all have our masters in counseling. That's our degree, that's our specialty. But we understand the prevention side and how important that is. And that's why we chose to become school counselors. In the, with the younger kids, in the third and fourth grade, we have twelve classes with them. That's also part of the related arts rotation. It's called exploratory time at Williston Central School. And we happen to have twelve classes because the way the schedule is structured with the third and fourth graders, we're able to meet with each group two times a week. And it's not taking them out of any related arts classes. It's just happens that in, in the third and fourth grade, they're, they are not in the tech ed and family and consumer science rotations. So there's an extra day there that we, we help along with library and technology and an extra PE that are filled in. I'm assuming many of you know that. This year, we've been working on the Act One mandate. I'm assuming you are familiar with the Act One mandate from the state, which is preventing child abuse, sexual abuse in, with all kids in Vermont. So there's an educational component to it. So our classes have been, again, developmentally, you know, organized and we're working with Prevent Child Abuse Vermont that has provided the curriculum that we're using. And so, and we've done, this is our second rotation of working with Prevent Child Abuse Vermont. We also, two years ago, did the same, you know, classes again. And they sequentially build upon the skills that are needed to help kids learn how to be safe and hopefully prevent any sort of abuse in their lives. So they get some skills in the third and fourth grade, in the fifth and sixth grade and seventh, eighth grade. And so, you know, they, they focus on a lot of these, you know, areas that you see down here from the main focus that we always tell the kids, it's making sure that you can identify and create healthy relationships with anyone that you're connected to. I mean, the stats out there are that it's not about stranger danger. You know, it's really about ninety-eight percent of the, those that have been abused know they're abuser, you know. So it's really about making sure that you're safe in your relationship. So that's kind of how we structure the message because, you know, we're not alarmist. We're, you know, we want to promote, you know, positive skills and attitudes in kids and hopefully instilling some confidence that they can grow up to be, you know, independent, responsible kids. So the skills we're teaching are about empathy, coping, respecting boundaries, certainly giving them some information at the appropriate age levels for sexual harassment, sexual abuse, talking especially with seventh and eighth graders about the issue of consent and obviously with all of them around support systems. You know, who do you go to if you really need some help? So those are kind of our prevention-based work right now with all students in Williston Central School. I think you're going to talk about the, just kind of some of the other.
Chime in, it was great to see at the beginning of the year, as Chris mentioned, there are different themes that happen every couple of years because we're teaching a three, four, and then five, six, and seven, eight. So we took a pulse of just, does anyone remember what we talked about last year at guidance? And there was a great deal, from my, you know, coming in with fresh eyes, kids not only remembered, but were able to really speak to the lessons and sort of connect the skills that had been covered in previous years to what we're talking about now. So that's obviously exactly what a teacher wants to see, which is great. So some specifics around our small group counseling. Chris and I just took a tally of the number of students this week as a snapshot of how many students we're seeing in groups this week. And between the two of us, there are a hundred and fifteen students. And as we said, that's, it's data-driven, it's referrals from teachers, parents, and students themselves. And we kind of try to move students in and out of those groups that we're addressing as many needs as possible throughout a school year. Again, some of the themes that we cover at the three through eight, there has been a decent amount of anxiety that we try to address both within our larger classes as well as our individual group and small group work. Relation to aggression is a common theme, as you might imagine, particularly among the sixth or eighth grader. If anyone's ever met one of those.
I have two of them.
No, over two. So, you know, friendship, loss, anger. And as I said, executive functions was a, was a new group that I ran for third, third and fourth graders, which is sort of an introductory to what that is and how that affects your life as a student. So that was really interesting, just kind of a new topic. So our peer prevention leadership groups, again, probably many of you have heard about these or have even had children as a part of them. But the two groups that we, Chris and I are currently running right now, A World of Difference, which is, it's a group that comes from the Anti-Defamation League that was started, gosh, thinking back in the eighties, eighties or nineties.
You mean the peer leadership component of it was in the eighties?
Right, right. And so how it looks at our school is there are twenty students in seventh and eighth grade who are both expressing an interest in wanting to be a part of this group and then are nominated by their classroom teachers and by their houses. To be a part of this, we meet once a week. At the beginning of the year, there is a training from, trainers from the Anti-Defamation League who come in and help students to sort of wrap their mind around some of these really big concepts around bullying and harassment, but also discrimination and prejudice and how that shows up in a global sense, in a national sense, and in our, in our smaller school communities. And it's just been really fascinating to watch these students. We recently took the students to the Vermont Association of Middle Level Educators Conference and they presented in front of, you know, two hundred or two hundred plus, two hundred fifty students and educators around what our program looks like at our school and the ways in which it's affecting our student population. And they were just all pros. I mean, they did a really fantastic job. So that was great to see. And we'll be scheduling classroom teaching. So the students who are participating in this group, they go into fifth grade classrooms and facilitate six classes around bullying prevention and harassment. So similar model, LEED stands for Leadership Education, the Anti-Drug. And, but it's really evolved over the years, as I've heard from Chris, that it's now just another leadership group at school. And they chose, again, twenty students who are nominated and we meet with them weekly for about fifty minutes. And we, they chose the concept of peer pressure that they wanted to research and learn more about and then educate their younger students around peer pressure and its effects on a learning community and on children. And so they will be scheduling classes for the sixth grade to teach.
Shannon, are those completely different groups of kids or is there an overlap?
No, they are completely different.
You can't do like both programs?
Cannot.
In addition, you know, we have VCAT, which you've probably heard of, Vermont Kids Against Tobacco. And that's also another seven, eight leadership group. And there's no overlap between any of them. We, our goal is to try to get as many kids involved in supporting our, our community, our learning community and taking ownership of, you're responsible for this climate as well. It's not just about what the adults do.
Right.
So we have sixty students that are involved in that, in the seventh and eighth grade.
Yeah.
Do you want me to speak to it?
Yeah, sure, why don't you?
So WISH, you hopefully have heard of WISH, Williston Student Helpers. It's been a program that's been running for about twenty years. And it's a community service program that kind of works with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Anyone who wants to join is welcome. And we do a training in the beginning and then they are assigned to a teacher's classroom pre-K to four for the entire school year. So they really make a commitment, a forty-minute commitment. And each year, the program's grown. We have forty-one students that are participating right now with about twenty that go to Allen Brook every Wednesday afternoon where their teachers have given them permission to miss the last piece of the day. And they're all assigned in classrooms and they go over and work. And I think it's a really wonderful way that our, again, older kids are helping younger kids and helping our community.
Do you try to make sure that there are like so many kids per upper house or? Because I'm sure a lot of it depends on what their rotate, what their schedule is and what they, what they would miss during that period of time. I know my kids have never wanted to miss their classes to do WISH, so they haven't done it, but they wish, they wish they could.
Yeah, well, the WISH, yeah, because I'll work with them in terms of, now, I know that the kids that go to Allen Brook have to go at one time because Walter thankfully has gotten a bus for us to transport kids. We used to do it ourselves and it was quite a scene. But, you know, we got a bus, so it's really opened up the Allen Brook campus, which has been really nice. So that's a set time during an afternoon and for some kids, that's too stressful to miss a class. But doesn't mean, doesn't preclude them from being part of WISH because we can schedule them in a WCS classroom at a time that better suits their schedule. And for those kids, you know, we certainly do. So, and the leadership groups are actually built in at core times that the kids won't miss band chorus or any, you know, other extra math class and things. Tuesdays and Fridays were set aside for leadership groups.
We need to be mindful of time.
I know we do, I was looking at that too.
I apologize, but this is the one evening we have a hard stop at seven to go.
Yeah, that's good.
Well, I'm glad we printed this off for you then because you could look more and ask us, you know, with further questions. But these are just a few snapshots of some of the school-wide presentations that we've brought, specifically In Search of Air. CSS, you brought this performer, Lida Winfield, who are in service at the beginning of the year. And her story is really amazing and powerful as well as her presentation of it. And so we found it so moving that we invited her to our building to present to the seventh and eighth graders. That was a great success. Sweethearts and Heroes is marketed as a bullying prevention, but as I've talked with other schools who have had that presentation at their school, they just rave about how effective it is and energizing it is for the students. So we're really excited that's coming in March. We just did a school-wide reads, which was also sponsored by PBIS. So every classroom, grade three through eight, you may have heard, read the book Rules by Cynthia Lord, which is a story that follows a sibling of someone who has a severe learning disability. And the classrooms have followed up in various ways. So that's been another great way to just connect in a common way throughout the building.
We're going to move through a few things, just told you. What we're going to do is just make a connection here about, you know, again, how we closely work with, you know, our behavioral supports in school. And, you know, mainly it's through PBIS and working with our planning room and working with our, you know, treatment teams and things like that. But in addition to the crisis response and de-escalation that obviously we're trained as counselors to help with and for kids that, you know, are struggling. As we go through, I know Carolyn just wanted to highlight, and I don't know if you see this type of data on a regular basis, but in terms of the Swiss data, which keeps track of student referrals to the planning rooms and behavioral data.
And I just want to say, so this is our four-year data. This is four years of full PBIS that we've had, not all three levels. But as we've added the levels, last year was the Tier Three level that we added. And this is looking at major behaviors. And I just think this is really remarkable because what this shows is, yes, we still have behaviors happening. They're kids, they're learning, that will always happen. But what we're doing is closing the gap on the red is the most major behaviors. And the yellow is the Tier Two behaviors that we're managing and teaching and providing interventions. And what this says to me is we are really making headway. And I see that with teachers, they have tools, they have confidence, we have teams to address this. And not that we don't get thrown into a tizzy and need resources, but we are, I feel like, really making headway. I wanted to make sure to share that.
And this is the ABS data, then we have the WCS data, which is showing the same trend, you know, in terms of, you know, again, hopefully closing that gap for major behavioral referrals. So we're, you know, seeing some nice results.
And PBIS is a, oh, go ahead.
This is more common for us internally. The ABS data, I would like to go back and look at this at some point in the future. The ABS data, I would like to go back and look at this at some point in the future because we just passed a budget that included new curriculum or new staffing to address problem behaviors. And this data suggests that the problem is actually getting better even before we instituted this, this budgetary increase. So I, I just want to raise that for discussion purposes later.
Maybe, maybe later on in the fall when you guys have established the program.
Yeah.
Whomever, you know, can come back to us and sort of bring it all together with the data you're working with and why you feel it's important and where it's going to make a difference.
Absolutely.
But it seems to me even though we've passed it, wouldn't it make sense to have some discussion before you even hire the resources to make sure that it's? I mean, I don't know. I'm just throwing that out.
It raises questions.
Right, the need is definitely there. I mean, there are kids that are just, you know, we can't handle the kids and that, there's, so when you see that, it looks like a centimeter, half a centimeter, that's like six or seven kids, you know? And those kids are really struggling from a home standpoint. So I, I, and the, and what we're talking about, what we were talking about for this program, Walter's been talking about is K through four, you know, because we have a five through eight program, you know, that specialized for kids who are really struggling. But we don't have that in three, four, we don't have that. So I, I think it gives, it will give us the flexibility if the problems are occurring at, at three, four level. But, you know, I can think off the top of my head of three children and families right now at the K two level that are, I don't know, want to say out of control, but it's, they're really, really struggling. The teachers are struggling.
And I would say the state, the, the, the folks at the Agency of Education, the state PBIS would, would say that that snapshot is, if you're doing things well as a school, that snapshot is pretty much what it should look like. And then there are best practice interventions to respond to the green, the yellow and the red levels. That, this sort of program that you've all approved being one of those best practices for the red level of need.
Right. Okay, thanks.
I don't know who was on this slide, but maybe, so anyways, just the last little wrap-up. Just, you know, some of our continued work are to continue to work with our national organization, American School Counselors Association. They have a whole new set of standards that they have been working on and are going to be unrolling. And it, it's all about mindsets and behaviors for student success. So again, it'll be new information for us, although the mindset work, you guys actually approved a, a budget. Part of the budget was a, a program called Brainology, which I think Walter hopefully shared more information with you. We have links and everything in here, but obviously with time, we won't be able to show you. But that's exactly about changing mindsets for student learning. And it's called a growth mindset, Carol Dweck's work, which is outstanding. So, and I'm a big proponent of that. Obviously, we're still, the other thing that's coming up is personal learning plans. You guys are aware that that's a new mandate as well within the Agency of Education. We've been working a lot, not only at CSSU level, but at our, our own Williston level for personal learning plans for seventh graders. We're continuing to work on, the district has started some work on cultural diversity and obviously student transitions from, you know, not only into our schools but out of our schools as well, connecting with the high school. You know, and our, our work is always to look at improving achievement, attendance and behavior with kids. That's really our, our focus. So for our specific next steps, just a couple of highlights. Shannon had mentioned about anxiety. We recognize that so many more parents are talking to us about kids with their stress and anxiety and how to help. So we're going to try to get a speaker in, you know, to help, you know, parents have more resources and more tools to help their own kids in addition to what we can give them. Obviously, the Brainology is a new thing that we're, Shannon and I are really excited about in terms of implementing with our fifth graders. It's, it's the program designed for kind of the fourth, fifth, sixth grade developed age level. So fifth grade, it's our transition into middle school. Those are the kids that really struggle as they first enter into middle school, so we're really excited about that. And then obviously the personal learning plans. And I know for Carolyn over at ABS.
I think, you know, you can read these for yourself, but I think one of the most significant ones is at Allenbrook this year, Cindy Cole, the psychologist, wrote a grant so that we could work with an expert, a social worker in the area of trauma for students and a response system in school. So Cindy asked if, if I would help head that up. And with the idea of it being able to be transferable to all the other schools in, somewhat, I mean, developmentally it's different, but in the, in the whole entirety of CSSU. So that's a site that I'm working on gathering information and building and will make available. And then the universal screening is actually a PBIS tool that Williston started this year. But looking at kids that externalize behaviors, trying to identify some of those top priority kids, but also kids that internalize behaviors. Once, you know, it's easy to spot the child that's acting out. It's hard to sometimes in a large system, see the kids that are really struggling with internalizing. So that's a, a screener that we're looking at developing too.
So again, you have this slide in your thing, in your packet. Again, if you'd like the electronic copy of it, I realize we ran a little over time. But we thank you for your time. Don't know if there's any quick questions you want. I know you have other business and I'm sure people want to get out on time, so. But thank you again from all of us.
I just want to say thank you to the three of you. I think the role that you guys play for our community, parents, teachers and students alike is incredibly important. So thank you for that.
Thank you for saying that. It's our pleasure.
Yep, and it reflects in the school culture, so it's appreciated.
Yes, great.
We agree. The culture, we have a really nice young school.
And.
At pre-K too.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, guys. So reports to the board, principals report. John, is there anything you need to call out specifically out of the report? Otherwise we, we've got to go. Does anybody have any questions? I don't think I did.
I do have an addendum.
Yeah, did you have more information?
Well, you know, it's a, it's a, just an addendum to the principal's report about the triple E peer model selection process. So I wanted to bring that up and let you know about the direction that we're going. It's not a major change, except that years ago, I mean, I've been here a long time, so. Years ago, there was a discussion at the boards about St. George and whether or not they would be selected, eligible to be selected in the peer program. We have, for our triple E program, we have, you know, peer models and, and
Oh, yeah.
as well as, you know, students with disabilities. So each year, we conduct a lottery to see who gets in. And last year, it turned out that everyone eventually was chosen from the waiting list this, you never know. I mean, I, so I think we had maybe had five or six students on the waiting list. But what, in the years past, the lottery has excluded the children of St. George, but we're, we're changing that practice. I mean, it should, should let you know, effective this year in recognition of our longstanding relationships with the families of St. George.
So the, could the children of St. George be in the triple E program as triple E kids?
They are in the, they are in the St. George program as triple E, as students of
They could be in the Williston schools in the triple E.
Students with disabilities.
Right.
They're in the Williston schools.
So they just couldn't be in the peer group then?
They wouldn't, yeah, but we would like, we're changing that process. And so just wanted to inform you about that in case. Comes up from, I don't know, ghosts of thirty years ago, something like that, but that's, it, it just makes sense.
Well, it's a victim of success, right? It was, it's a very popular program to become peer, isn't it? In, in general, it's been, right?
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. FAPAC?
FAPAC, well, there's tons going on. Karen would be able to say a lot more than I do, since she's actually doing the big basket raffle, which is heavily going underway. The variety show just happened and I think it was a great success. I heard it was incredible. I am so sorry I missed it. Let's see. Lucky You, a new program, has been introduced.
Yeah, there's, the bottom line is there's too much going on.
Yes.
So too much going on
Yes.
in a very short period of time. And we, one of the big things we're going to do in May is try it for next year to schedule things out, space things out a little bit differently. I think the, moving the school musical really impacted all the FAP things. And so, because you can't really do a lot in May and June for fundraising. So it just kind of pushed everything into this little January through March window with having the musical in the middle of April. So, so we're going to try and spread things out on next year. And that's, that's one of the big things we talked about. And then trying to identify, perhaps identify a vice chair and then also a treasurer who could train all of next year because the treasurer now has to transition out after next year. So trying to have some transition plans in place.
Good.
In addition to transitions for me.
See, this is why you're so good at that. Thank you.
Great. So we're going to, we'll do discussion matters after action. So we have a few things under action matters. It's now seven dot one. It's affirm our code of conduct. So every year, we reaffirm our code of ethics for school board members. This is, for those of you who are familiar with it, we, we do every year. This was in your packet. Does, has everybody read it and understands this and is comfortable with it?
Yep.
So we don't need to take time to go through it because I will if there's, and there's any questions. Great. So I'll sign and ask you all to sign. And that, we'll take care of that. I guess, we actually, we need a, do we need a motion to affirm? I mean, it's, it's action or is the signature the action? I think the signature's got the action.
The action.
Or in, in the alternative, could we vote on it by motion and avoid the signatures?
We need a signature on file.
I bet they want that.
Nice try, counselor. I'm halfway through my signature here, you know. Okay, great. So we have some personnel action matters. First one is approving a nomination for a physical education teacher.
Okay, I've chaired that.
Got that one?
Me, yeah.
Okay.
You all know Jen Oaks, who is retiring? I don't know how many years, but forty years.
Forty-two, like forty-two or forty-three.
So she's an institution. So, you know, so we, we, I'll go through this pretty quickly. But we are very pleased to present as a candidate for your approval Dustin King, who's been five years at Swanton. And, you know, it's, it's a long drive to Swanton. He's done a great job there. Well, and he lives, you know, he lives in Burlington, so that's one of their, that's, I, I like to look at, it's, you know, what, what is one of the reasons that here? Besides Williston, Williston is an unbelievable place. We had seventy applicants and then we had to cut it off. So it's an unbelievable place to work, as you guys know. So we had a PE teacher, special educator, classroom teacher and a coach reviewed over sixty applicants for the full-time PE teacher to take the place of the retiring Jen Oaks. She's also the athletic director. And so we'll, we'll go through a separate process with that. We asked the candidates to rate their strongest characteristics out of a checklist of fourteen attributes for a PE teacher. So we used a pretty formal process to, we looked at the attributes that we have in place and we asked the candidates to rate theirs. So we're trying to look at, you know, some leadership skills and that kind of thing. We interviewed seven candidates. We asked each the same eleven questions, which ranged from questions about their passion to knowledge of content to communication with parents and community to classroom management. Two candidates rose to the top. We asked them to come back and teach a lesson. I mean, I don't think I would get a job now if I had to go to, yeah. And it's, it's very stringent. And teach a lesson while committee members observe. So by consensus, Dustin King was chosen, by consensus, to be chosen to be recommended to you guys for approval. Just, I'll just give you some quick highlights. He worked at Swanton, as I said, for five years. His references were enthusiastic. In fact, we see, we received several recommendations unsolicited, you know, from principals that he's worked with. He's been the AD for Swanton Elementary, leading coach soccer, basketball, track and field. He's a member of the Swanton Elementary School Leadership Team, representing Unified Arts. As a wellness coordinator there, instituted a school-wide walking program, working with the Vermont Safe Roots to School Program. After attending a nutrition, education institute at Shelburne Farms, his committee received a grant for a mobile cooking cart. I mean, he does it all. He enjoys staying current on research. He talked a lot about research. He loves his work. His people skills are excellent. He makes good use of technology and is skilled at differentiating instruction to include all students regardless of their mobility or their disability. Lives in Burlington, so Williston's be a shorter commute. But beyond that, he acknowledges that working in Williston will be, this is a quote from him, a dream opportunity. And quoting from his cover letter, he said, "My greatest ambition as a physical educator is to instill lifelong passion for recreation in my students while providing them with necessary skills to enjoy an active and healthy lifestyle." Committee and the administration is pleased to recommend Dustin. He has big shoes to fill, but we're confident he's up to the task.
Good. Can I have a motion to approve the hiring for the physical education position? And I guess we should mention, we're hiring Dustin King, right?
Dustin King, yes.
Great.
I'll make a motion to hire Dustin King.
Great. Have a second?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion?
Just, I, I just want to comment that I really appreciate the written materials for this position and the other. This was, I think, the first time since I've sat on the board that we got a great outline of both the process and the qualifications. And I would love to see this format utilized universally with positions to come. This was really, really helpful.
Really gives us a great comfort level.
Oh, good.
Yeah. So thank you.
You will really like this man.
Good.
Okay.
Great. So any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Please welcome.
I just think it's a side, it's a side benefit totally that to have a male PE instructor is really great.
As you know, we had to be really careful.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, you know.
But to, to have that be the end result.
But it is the end result. It worked out great. There were, yeah, there ended up being two males for the final position. There were some really great applicants in this. I mean, it's just a, it's a, it shows the, shows how, the reputation of Williston and how, you know, I mean, I think that the board is partially responsible for that and the administrative, administration. But, you know, it was a, it was a hard process, but this, these two guys rose to the top and Dustin rose to the top of it. Yeah, I'm glad to, thank you for mentioning the process. I have to give Walter credit because he, you know, he gave me the direction to do it that way, so.
No, this was really, really helpful to have that in advance and to digest it. Thank you.
Thank you for changing so that I can, I have a brother-in-law from Scotland, Professor Edinburgh, so he's waiting dinner for me, so thank you very much.
Go enjoy your time with your family.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And then there was one. Okay, guys, we're going to, we're going to barely make it under the wire, but we're doing okay here. So we also have a, an actual item to approve the nomination to tier two math intervention teacher. So John, can you take us through that?
Yeah, I can only give you, I can't give you the same amount because I wasn't involved in that, but it's, I'm not even sure I can pronounce her name. Jean Sequera?
I believe that's right.
I think that's, that's right. Let's see, she was a math coach at Loyola North in Hyde Park, math teacher, middle school level. Also in Hyde Park, she started in nineteen eighty-eight teaching. She is Vermont Professional Development Leader, she is, which is part of the Vermont Agency of Education. She has basically a seven twelve math certification. And tough shoes to fill, these are Kathy Rossiere, who's retiring. Kathy's wonderful. But I think Jackie and the team felt pretty confident with Jean. So that's the only summary I have, but at least it's a little something.
That's good. We have a lot of information in the package, so.
Yeah, yes.
Is she going to be doing the Spark Academy's work?
Probably. We want to continue that on because Kathy did a great job with that too, so.
Great.
Great. So can I have a motion to approve hiring Jean Sequera as our new, I want to get it right, tier two math intervention teacher?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion? Great. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, uh, I think that gets us through action matters. Uh, so, uh, let's jump back over to consent agenda. Yeah, let me go backwards here on my stuff.
So also remind you that there's bagged.
Oh, there is, yeah, by the way.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, discussion matters, so, uh, item, now it's eight dot one, it's a policy, so all of the policies, so, uh, for those not familiar, the way this works is, we have a, we have Kevin, who's a, our representative to the Policy Committee for the CSSU. We all adopt the policies from the CSSU level, but it's our responsibility to review them and then approve them for use in our district. Um, so it goes, all of the policies get reviewed on either a three- or five-year schedule, and I don't recall which is the right number, because there are many.
Yes.
And, um, the ones that are up for review now, uh, the committee has gone through and made recommendations for changes if necessary, and then it comes to us for our review, and that's what you have in your packet. So this month we'll discuss these, and next month we, they will be on our action to approve. Okay? So given that, um, uh, Kevin, is there anything in particular about these policies that are up this month that we should be aware of, or?
I said I wasn't able to make the meeting, but, well, going into it after pre-reading, I mean, they were kind of cut and dry. I mean, that looked like there were some minor changes.
Yeah, I, yeah, I personally don't have any questions, I understand where they consolidated one and why, so.
And, and just, you know, I'm on that committee as well.
Oh.
So, I'm the admin rep for the K eights, and Jeff Evans is the high school rep.
Got it, oh, great, okay.
It's a big committee.
It is, and, and I was there for these, and you're right, there were minor changes if, if anything, and they were pretty much cut in the eye almost, and so.
Okay.
They do, if I could just bring to light real quickly, so eligibility for kindergarten, so that is still the way it is. Um, September one, there is leeway up to October first, and that's my discretion or the principal's discretion.
I didn't know that.
Just to bring to light to you, I've gotten three parents this year who want to register their children, and their birthdays are all mid-October or October tenth. It's interesting, I've never really had that many before.
So this is like an early.
Yeah, and I don't know where it's coming from, but I, this is the first year.
So. So is your leeway through October first or the end of October?
No, October first.
So there's not really much to do about this.
I meet individually with all the parents that are asking, and I go through the explanation of the, of the policy, um, and where we're at, and at this point, they're all okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just so I share that, it's interesting.
That is interesting.
Never had that many, I had one before, but three, this is three just for next year.
And this is for K, this is for K, yeah.
K, yeah. But we stick by that, just so you know.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good.
Interesting.
Um.
Thank you for the red lines.
Yep.
No, I mean, it makes review of policies so much easier.
It makes incredibly different, yeah, so much easier, yeah.
Yeah. Um, okay, uh, so, uh, eight dot two, communications boards corner, next article submission.
Did we just do an article?
Yeah. We, we kind of went through, do we have anything that we feel we need to get out to the community right now? Aside from, well, I think we, we're good.
Thank you, thank you for passing the budget.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. A little, a little late, but we can do it, I suppose.
What is this?
So what we do is, is.
Oh, he's like, what?
That's right, so, uh, so every month, uh, pretty much every month, we put on discussion, uh, kind of an item around communicating with, with the community. And it usually comes down to, uh, barring something else going on, one of us writing an article for the, for the observer. And, you know, passing on some, something that's going on that we want to make sure people are aware of.
And the last one was written by Josh with regards to the budget.
Yeah, yeah. So I think if we want to do something, you know, before next month, a, a quick thank you.
Hmm.
Rock, paper, scissors?
Isn't it too late though?
It kind of, I kind of feel like it, I, I mean, I don't want to not thank people, but I also think that, you know, unless there's.
A compelling need.
Compelling need.
Could the, um, this Allenbrook Community Park?
I think we need to have some more discussion before, before we.
There's a lot of discussion, yes, around that stuff.
It may very well be, yeah, right.
We haven't had any yet, but I just wasn't sure.
So if I can help you, uh, next week, it's my turn for an article in The Bell, I'd be glad to put something in that reference the school board, thank you to the community.
That would be wonderful, yeah.
I can do that.
Well, are you talking about The Bell or The Observer?
Well, this would be The Bell, but at least it's getting out somehow, that, a thank you.
Well, you posted something on Facebook saying thank you.
I did. Yep, and I, and I reposted it in Williston Parents, so.
I'll make note and put a little something in there.
Which actually gets to a lot of people, surprised.
I think we're good. Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, we're ahead of the game here, establishment and facilities committee, check that box. Uh, school district's willingness to accept recreation boundary on school property, so there was a, there were some better maps and stuff in your handouts.
I just want to go back to the communication just for a minute.
Yep.
I just have a suggestion, I'm not a Facebook person, um, that the, I, I, Facebook had the posting of Walter's replacement before the alert went out to all parents. Um, and so I just feel like that was a little backwards, that the, uh, the Connect Five or whatever it's called that goes out to parents didn't come until twenty-four hours after the school board's Facebook page had that information posted, and so just think we need to.
I didn't even get a Connect Five.
Yes.
Like, that's the, the call?
No, no, the, the email that we all get from the school came out like Saturday, but someone, someone copied the Facebook posting and sent it to me Friday night, so.
Well, it kind of makes sense, because electronic is quicker.
I know. But it just, for those of us not on Facebook, it should, you know, the universal should come first, and then everything else should be after, so, it's just my two cents.
So noted, yeah, for someone who's not on Facebook as well.
I didn't.
I don't know.
What, okay, what, Twitter, Snapchat, what's the?
Yeah.
So noted. So, uh, John, what can you do to help us start with this?
So, I'm, and again, we're down to like seven minutes.
We're gonna do it, we're gonna be fine.
So I've, I've been involved with this committee, and it started in two thousand and eight, as we were developing and starting the process, working with Kevin Finnegan. Um, the town has a definite need for more fields, for recreational uses. Um, so, we also found out that this is really town property or town land. So what they, what he tried to do on the map is to kind of map out to you, and this was based through my work with the committee, that the red area, um, is, is sort of reserved a little bit for school and school use. The blue big rectangle is really based for tech, okay, for their fields. When I worked with them, we left everything to the west, um, sort of to the east, so that it was open in case we were going to expand at some point. Allenbrook, if you remember, was going to be a clamshell, so it was going to be the exact same.
Yep.
So those boundaries are still there in case the school needs to, um, add on at any time.
Okay, explain to me where, where the add-on could, could occur, if I'm looking at this.
Yep, so.
I know it's a little hard, because it's small.
It is, uh.
Is it, like, if I'm looking at it, like, if I'm looking at, like, like this, is it to the, is it clamshell this way?
I think this, I think this map is a really good one, I don't know if you get that map in there?
Is that better? Yep, got that one right here.
Okay. So it's this area all through here is where the expansion would be.
Yeah, that one.
Okay, so that's, so this is my question then, because if I turn the page and look at this one.
Yeah, it's kind of giving you.
It looks to me like the town is designating, uh, adding additional parking around the school, is that what?
Yeah, uh, well, the parking actually, yeah, see, that is way too close, because the parking is, actually was designed to go way out over here, on this side, way over by the boundary line.
But that's town property.
Right, that's, that's, well, the, the town is trying to get parking.
John, can you, can you stand up, because I can't see what you're showing, and I.
Sure.
Sorry, John.
It's okay.
Others may feel the same way.
Oh, I know, okay, I know what you're talking about, so that is actually, um.
You see, there's existing.
So what that is, that's a combination school and town parking. And so let me kind of back up for just a quick second, because if we add on, we're going to need some more parking spaces.
Sparking?
So it's designed to do as a double duty, it's going to be for the park and for the school.
Yeah, and, okay.
Okay? And so that was, when you seen in that small one, you don't see it so much in the big one. But in the big one, see, this is where the addition would go, it's over here.
Mm-hmm.
And where would the additional parking go?
This would be like right over here.
Okay.
Okay, so we left this property, this piece for the school, so that if we ever had to add on.
I see why I'm confused.
So it's, would project out the current playground?
This is bike path. This is bike path.
Yes, correct, okay.
I, I was thinking there's like another property.
We position the playground to the events.
And this must be bike path here.
It would go out in the back area here. So let me just give you a little history, because when I came, that's where it was supposed to be.
So this has got to all be. So, John?
And somebody moved it to here, and it, I don't.
So if I, if I look at this, these aren't property lines, these are actually existing bike paths?
That's the bike path.
And this is a bike path?
Yes, because they're going to move the bike path away from the school and put it way over here.
So is this property all here, uh, school property?
Correct.
Okay, now it makes a lot more sense to me. Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
So just to give you what he was talking about, is to move the bike path over and down this way, and then connect up. So it pulls away from the school.
From the school.
Safety issues for me.
Right.
Um, and this is all of the school boundary here.
Well, okay, so I'm looking at this drawing, and it almost seems like there's an overlap between where they want the field and Allen property.
Yes. That's what I'm concerned, I just couldn't read this.
Yeah, I know, see, that's, and, and there is going to be a little bit of an overlap, you're right, that's right.
Is, is one option that we could consent to the property being utilized except for this, which is.
Well, they can't, because this is wetlands back here.
Yeah.
This area here.
So they can't.
Or we're losing, or we're giving up any, any further reconfiguration.
But keep in mind too, we get the benefit of all of these fields. So for our, you know, PE program, that kind of enhances our program, because there's more opportunities than what we have right now, so.
Yeah.
And how much are the grant dollars at stake?
That I have not heard, I, I don't know, to be honest with you, um.
That would be an important question.
That would be something we really need to understand.
They, they, so there's a, there's a couple of parts, because the committee kind of, like, fizzled for a while, because they were relying on some of the impact fees, and if you remember, the impact fees kind of slowed or died down. The committee has not met since then, and we're talking with four years ago probably. So with the new rec director, he's the one that's going after this grant, but I haven't heard, like, how much it is, or are they matching money, or anything like that, I have not heard. So I don't know what the actual grant amount is.
And we don't have any, like, maintenance of it, responsibilities.
No, no, town does everything, they do all the fields, they currently are doing those two multipurpose fields.
Mm-hmm.
They're doing it all.
Great.
They mow it, fertilize it, cut it, everything.
So I think.
I guess one thing just to raise is, you know, while the fields at Central School are wonderful, the traffic that it creates is, you know, something to make sure we plan for, because Allenbrook traffic already is difficult getting in and out. When you all of a sudden start having sporting events and people having to get out and things like that, and how does that impact things that might be going on in the school, if you want to have, you know, curriculum night, and it happens to be the same night as baseball games, you know, do they take over all the parking for school events, so just making sure there's that kind of coordination.
Yep. Oh, definitely.
Yeah, that and, and to that, to that, I would, I would make this agreement continued upon the fact that that parking is built.
So you're right, because I pushed for this, and what I said was.
Because that's going to.
That should be your second or third piece that you put in there, don't put that as the last thing that you're doing.
Absolutely not.
Right.
I, I don't know if they get my, personally, I don't think that's a great idea at all.
So what I'm pushing for, just so you know, the next grant only covers this little red thing here, which is actually like two tennis courts and a basketball court.
Ah-ha.
That's all it's covering. Okay? So if that goes through, then my next push on the committee is I want the parking in.
But they're going to park at the school parking, because it's going to be closer to where those tennis courts are being built, you can tell by just looking at this.
That, that's correct, but they're going to start the next phase, which will be out here with the baseball fields, and that's what's going to be drawing a lot of people, as well as these fields already are with the lacrosse and soccer. So I'm pushing for them to get this parking done, you know, before you start putting these baseball fields and stuff in. So that, that's what I'm pushing on the committee, I agree with Kevin, I can't handle all that parking, I just can't.
Take care of it.
And you're right, if I have a function that night, and it's the art show, and then you've got something going.
Yep, we're, we're, we're going to.
So I've been pushing them, because that's been my pet peeve, is I need help here with parking.
So I, I think.
That would help us too, with parking actually.
Well, yeah, but, yes, so I think that, um, the feedback you need to, the other question I had, before I say that, this is obviously feedback, but is there a, a grant deadline in, at stake here?
I think there is a deadline on it, and it's the end of March, I believe, is what I was told, and I, you know, uh, they've asked for letters and support, but I think he's just making sure that the board's informed and that you know and getting your blessing, basically.
Well, he needs more than that, doesn't he need us to grant him access to the property? I mean, isn't, isn't this our, is this, is this, see, I thought that this red line signified, I guess it doesn't, is it town property, the blue line, the blue box?
The blue box, what I found interesting was, another.
Well, it doesn't matter, the red boundary says school boundary, so, now those tennis courts are within the school boundary.
Yeah, so he, he needs a little more than my blessing, he needs the board's approval, so.
Correct. Sure.
Okay, all right, so, so I think you, the feedback you can give him is that we're concerned about the parking, very concerned about the parking. And we, uh, we'd like to have an understanding of the grant amount at stake and the deadline that, that he's facing.
Okay.
I think this matter involves significant deliberation, because presuming that this is school land that we're essentially conveying to the town in perpetuity.
Permanently, yes.
And I'm all in favor of open space, but, um, I, I don't think this is something we can just do quickly, um, because of the ramifications to the future, and so.
It's tennis courts and a basketball court that we're talking about.
Right, I mean, I, I didn't realize the limited.
Do we really need those?
Well, I, I agree, there's a need.
There's a need really for the other things, and so, yeah.
I, I think it's.
Look into it further.
Yeah, I, yeah.
So he can't, if, he can't apply for the grant to get these if he doesn't get approval from the board, right?
No, he'd need to sign off on that six oh five A or whatever it is, I think, that says that we'll always, uh, restore it as.
Yeah.
Recreational fields, and without it, he can't always.
I, I think you're right, I think, I think that's what he's looking for.
Yeah, you need that in order for that grant.
And again, it's to maintain them as recreational fields only, can't be development out there, can't be any housing anywhere, it can only be recreational.
And I don't view this as a choice between giving it to a developer, it, the question is whether, in the, you know, we're.
Yeah, right, correct, yes.
School needs, whatever they may be.
That, that's, that's our responsibility.
Our own playground versus tennis courts, um, things of that issue.
And if you ever add on, and what impact does that have?
Auditorium, whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
High school. We don't have a lot of.
Okay, so in the interest of time, there's no action to be taken here, uh, I think we may.
I'll get the information.
Find ourselves in discussion again next month, barring, I, I don't think there's any way anything else is going to happen.
And you know, I don't know, maybe we should even consider having him here, right?
Yeah, he actually offered this time, but I knew we would be up against it, so I, uh, and, and, yep.
I called him, reached out.
Yeah, so, uh, I suspect we'll ask him next time to be here, so we'll do. One other thing on discussion matters, um, process of appointment of the, of CVU's school board Wilson representative. Since no one ran for the open seat in Williston for CVU, it's not CVU's issue, it's ours.
Oh.
We must vet and appoint, so.
Maybe that's, maybe.
This is for CVU, yes, again.
Well, going back to communications, maybe.
Maybe that's what we need to do.
And, and solicit applications like we did for the last board position.
Who's up, is it my turn? I don't mind doing it.
Sure.
I don't want it to be my turn, I'm the newbie here.
We'll get you on a, on a, on a, on a couple of. All right, I'll take it.
You want something in The Bell or that too next week?
Nope, I'll do the, I'll do this one to the observer. It needs to go out to a broader and slightly different audience, anyway, so.
But maybe Kevin.
Well.
Both.
Well, maybe both, yeah.
Yeah, why not?
Yeah.
Even Facebook, you know?
And I would just direct him to you, Kevin.
Do that. Yep, and we'll go from there, okay?
Hey, every little bit helps, right?
Yep.
More people involved.
Tuesday at noon is Cindy's deadline for the school bell, just for you to know.
I'm, I'm on next week, Jackie's on this week, so, but I will, yeah.
Oh, I thought it was Kevin, I was talking to Kevin.
Consent agenda.
I'm going to do the Bell, I'll put something in here about.
Oh, you'll put it in the Bell about the.
Yep.
School board, too.
It was even in the F A C.
Gonna, gonna override you guys, we need to do consent agenda. So, consent agenda, it's a meeting minutes from our last two meetings, and the director's orders, which are there. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as, as is?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody find anything in the consent agenda that needed to be changed? Okay, hearing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. We're back on April fourteenth, it's that simple. That's next meeting date.
By the way, that's my birthday.
Oh, you shouldn't have said that, we got you now.
I'm spending my anniversary at the basket raffle and my birthday.
My anniversary is mainly.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, we're out of here.